And Bernie leaves the meeting. Okay, I'm gonna give Bernie one minute to get back on our meeting. Here he is. Perfect. Okay. I would like to start the meeting. You're gonna hear a lot from me tonight, so you might get sick of me by the end of the night, and I apologize. As a preliminary matter, this is Mary Beth Lynch, the Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and staff are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Paul George.
Yeah.
Lisa Cosette?
Here.
Peter Mulcahy.
Hey folks, I'm here, sorry, just had camera off.
Great, thank you. And Patrick Fulon?
Yeah.
Thank you. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bernard Cahill?
Present.
Rowan McAllister?
Here.
Kristin Mapolo?
Here.
Patty Sheehan?
Here.
Stephen Medals? Okay. We don't have Stephen, but I think we can continue on. Good evening. This is an open meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals and is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. For this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals is convened by telephone conference and video conference via Google Hangout. You may join by telephone by calling 1-234-564-6949 and enter the following PIN. Meeting ground rules. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do, please permit me to cover some basic ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to assure accurate meeting minutes. I, Mary Beth Lynch, will introduce each board member or staff member who has a lead role for this particular item or guest speaker associated with the item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide any comment or question. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing *6 or mute your computer when you are not speaking as to not trigger your camera feed or background noise. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. As provided by the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9 and Section 10, the Board of Appeals has granted the power to hear and decide matters or petitions for special permits and variances. For a special permit, the Board must find that a proposal will not create a nuisance by virtue of noise, odor, smoke, vibration, traffic generated, unsightliness, or other conditions detrimental to the public good. For a variance, the Board must find that a proposal does not deter nor derogate from either the proposed or intention of the bylaw and that due to the unique conditions of the lots' size, shape, topography, and shape, strict compliance with the requirements of the zoning bylaw would be an undue hardship. The purpose of the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws are amongst other purposes to lessen congestion in the streets, to conserve health, to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers, to provide adequate light and air, to prevent overcrowding of land, to encourage housing for all people of all income levels, to avoid undue concentration of population, to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, water supplies, drainage, sewage, schools, parks, open space, and other public requirements, to conserve the value of land and buildings, including the conservation of natural resources and the prevention of blight and population of the environment, to encourage the most appropriate use of land through the town of Shrewsbury and to preserve and increase its amenities. In addition to keeping our microphones muted until called upon, I would remind the public to please keep any questions or comments brief and to the point. All questions should be made through the Chair. First agenda item is to approve an expense of $392 to the Worcester Telegram and Gazette for December 21st, 2020 legal notices. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the bill as read.
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Thank you, so moved. Second agenda item is to start the public hearing for a 6:30 hearing to hear the case of Tony Nguyen and Sarah Vo at 6567 Lear Street in the Rural B District. This is for a special permit of Section 4B to remove a detached accessory structure and construct an addition to a non-conforming single-family dwelling and for a variance to Section 7, Table 2, to construct an addition on a single-family dwelling, creating a new non-conforming front yard setback. The public hearing for 6567 Lear Street is a new public hearing. Could the applicant please introduce themselves and explain their application to the Board and to the public?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chairman, can I just interfere for one second?
Yes, sir.
We didn't review the minutes of...
Oh, thank you.
Now, I was wondering if we're gonna go through that first or take the first hearing?
Uh, as a point of action, Bernie, are we, can we backload that? Put it the back...
Excuse me, I would just deal with the minutes now.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes as...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry. So there are a number of minutes to approve. Hold on, I wanna just get the list. Sorry. Go to the agenda. Do we have a list of all the minutes? It's not in the agenda.
I have them right here.
Okay, so I, Madam Chair, I I, for one, was able to review some of the minutes, but not others. So I was able to review April, June, and July and have no comments, but I do have modifications for the January minutes, and I was not able to review the minutes that were sent out today for October. So I don't know about everyone else.
I am in the same position. They came in fairly late in the day.
Just Octobers did.
So...
So I, if everyone has at least reviewed April, June, and July and have no comments, we could move to approve those minutes?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so I think...
Can I get a motion to approve April, June, and July minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Pete, Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the January minutes?
I have modifications that I sent to Kristen, so I would prefer to wait for the next meeting to approve those minutes.
So moved. Okay, thank you for that. Let's move on to our first hearing, if we may. Attorney Ricker, can we pick up where we left off?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Richard Ricker, and I represent Tony Nguyen and Sarah Vo, who are the applicants, for these appeals. As a first matter, I think Mr. Cahill and I and Attorney Vadas have agreed that I should withdraw the variance request. Is that right, Bernie?
That is correct.
Because, as you may recall, we were in front of you in November, and there was a question as to whether or not we would need a variance for the side yard setback issue. We subsequently did file a variance, and you have the papers before you, but it has been subsequently determined that a variance is not required. This is a special permit, and only a special permit. This matter involves a removal, a request to remove a portion of the, what we now call the accessory structure that was connected to the main house with foundation and with stairs and a concrete patio. You can see on the plan that with the outline has the accessory structure actually within the layout of Lear Street. That is going to be removed, if you allow this, and the addition would then be built onto the main two-story dwelling. As I told you back in November, this is a two-stall garage as well as a workshop. There would be a master bedroom on the second floor of the addition, together with, I guess the best way to look at it is a den or a home office. So what we're doing is we are altering, obviously, a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot. This is an interesting lot. It's a long, narrow lot. You can see it's right on the lake. It's at the end of Lear Street. That back end of Lear Street, I don't think is even constructed, although, like I say, the the structure to be removed is actually within the layout, which I would think we all would like to see removed. I would suggest to you respectfully that there is, this is not detrimental in any way, shape, or manner to the public good, and there's no nuisance value to this at all. I think that this actually improves the situation down there. What it does is it changes the setback, however, of the main structure from 5.7 feet, I think, to 0.9 feet off of the layout of Lear Street, but it is still off of Lear Street. So it is clearly a vast improvement. If any of you have driven down this section of Lear Street, you know, as I do, that this is a pretty rough section. It is the end, basically, of Lear Street. As far as the construction of the street goes, it's gravel. It's not really paved. And so I would suggest to you respectfully, there is no detriment whatsoever, and this is actually an improvement to this part of town, and I would ask you therefore to allow a special permit. I did not introduce my clients. I'm not sure. I looked through the list, and I'm not sure whether they've called in or whether they're with us, but if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Attorney Ricker. Ms. McAllister or Mr. Cahill, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time.
Neither do I. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Let's go through the board and see if we have any questions or comments. Let's start with Lisa, please.
I guess I have a question through you, Chair, for Mr. Cahill or Ms. McAllister. The comment letter we received was prior to the decision that a variance was not necessary. Is there anything that you would change in the comment letter that we need to address?
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. Yeah, so the current zoning determination is not reflected in the comment letter. You are correct. But as Attorney Ricker outlined, what has changed is that North Quinsigamend Avenue now serves as frontage, and Lear Street, both improved and, both the portions improved and unimproved, serve as a continuous side yard setback. So again, as Attorney Ricker outlined, it's just that the side yard setback is becoming more non-conforming, going from 5.7 feet to 0.9 feet.
Got it. Thank you. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, do you have any questions?
Just a general comment. I'd say I'm very familiar with this parcel of the rower. I row by it all the time. If there was ever a parcel that met the standards for variance, I think it's this one, so I think this certainly meets the requirements for a special permit.
Thank you. Patrick? Any comments, questions?
No comment.
And Paul, comments or questions?
Not at this time, thanks.
Thank you. This being a public hearing, are there any members of the general public who have questions or comments? I'm gonna give it a few seconds, just to make sure that anybody out there that wants to be heard has the ability to be heard on this matter. Going once. Going twice. Okay, I think we are good.
Madam Chair, if I could just add one thing to this, if you'd allow me to. I'm not sure of the process, but I would ask that you allow us to apply for, if necessary, and in any event, get a refund of the $300 filing fee for the variance. I'm not sure what's necessary. I'd sent Bernie an email asking him what was gonna serve for that.
Yeah, so that's already been taken care of, Richard, administratively. I believe the Board will have to vote to accept the withdrawal without prejudice tonight, at the same time that it makes the vote on the special permit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, do, can I get a motion to approve the withdrawal of the application for a variance without prejudice?
Move to approve the withdrawal of the application for variance without prejudice?
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, sorry, point of order. Should we assume that you are also aye?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Mary Beth Lynch, aye. Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, you're doing so much. It's easy to forget that, so I'll remind you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's a help. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve a special permit to demolish a detached accessory structure and to construct an addition on a non-conforming single-family dwelling at 6567 Lear Street?
Move to approve as stated?
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye. Moving right along to our next 6:30 meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you. To hear the appeal of Karen McManus at 21 Oak Street. This is in a residence B2 district. This is for a variance of Section 7, Table 2, to construct a detached garage 27.7 feet from the front property line and a special permit to Section 4B to add an addition to a non-conforming single-family dwelling. The public hearing for 21 Oak Street is a new public hearing. Could the applicant please introduce themselves and explain their application to the Board and to the public?
Good evening. I'm Karen McManus, and my husband Kevin will do the explanation.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam Chair, thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. We have an application for a variance for a special permit. We're removing our garage, and we are going to be replacing it without the existing structure that connects it to our home. It's gonna bring us 2.5 feet closer to Sherwood Ave, but I think that Paul would agree that it'll actually add to the community by beauty, and it will remove an existing structure that is not very attractive, and it won't impact traffic or I don't think it'll have any negative impact to the town.
Okay. Thank you for that. Ms. McAllister, do you have anything further to add?
Um, no, just to clarify quickly that the variance is for the newly constructed detached garage, shown in the plans, which is a setback of 27.2, 30 feet is the minimum requirement, so that is a new nonconformity. The special permit is due to the proposed addition due to the pre-existing nonconforming front yard setbacks for the house, and the addition will increase or decrease that side yard setback, but not more than the minimum required 10 feet. That is all.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Now let's go through the board to see if anyone has questions or comments. I'd like to start with Lisa, please.
Hi there. I just have a question about the, so the new newly constructed garage will be closer to Sherwood Avenue. Can you explain a little bit about why it isn't going to be in the same footprint that's already there?
Unfortunately, the existing garage is actually too small for us to even park a car in. The entire structure is just old, and it's not meant for today's vehicles. It's difficult to actually back in and out of the garage. It's an old structure that really needs to come down. So the new structure is just more conforming to parking our vehicles today.
So it's hard for me to tell from the pot plan submitted. I see that the new garage will be 24 by 24, which is, meets current standards. Can you guesstimate what the existing garage is in comparison?
16 by 16.
Okay, thank you.
The garage is.
Okay, thank you. I have no more questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Peter, any questions, comments?
Well, just to clarify, I had understood from the plan that the existing garage and the proposed garage are actually going to be the same distance from Sherwood Avenue. Is that right?
No, actually, currently the existing garage is 27.2 feet, and the new garage proposed is going to be 29... No, I'm sorry, just the opposite. We're currently 29.7 feet, and we're proposing to be 27.2 feet.
Oh, okay, I'm seeing now. I could not tell the difference between the seven and the two. Okay, so the difference is really very small then, ultimately, given the distance. Yeah, okay. I mean, I guess my sort of general reaction is that I think it's only really a variance because of this kind of wrinkle in the rules about building a new detached garage, but really, it's just it's building a slightly newer garage, more or less in the same location, and not really making anything worse in terms of setbacks. Is that a fair summary?
Fair.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Patrick, any comments or questions?
No, looks good to me.
Thank you. Paul, comments, questions?
Yeah, I just have one question. The proposed addition is taking place of the deck?
Yes.
And is that a one-story addition or is it a two-story addition?
It's a one-story addition.
That's all I have.
Thank you. I have no comments or questions myself. Being that it's a public hearing, is there any members of the public who have questions or comments? And I remind the public to please keep their questions and comments brief and to the point. I'm gonna give it a few seconds to see if there's anyone out there that would like to be heard on this matter. I don't see anybody. Anybody's speakers lighting up? Okay. All right, I think we've given enough time. I certainly hope we have. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye. Okay. There an objection to all or part of the application, please? Uh, no, 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 sorry. Okay, so I need to get a motion to approve the variance for Section 7, Table 2, of the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws and a special permit to construct a detached garage 27 and 2/10ths feet from the front yard setback and to construct a 16-foot by 16-foot addition on an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 21 Oak Street? May I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, point of order?
Yes.
Are we gonna do any board discussion first and create a record or no?
Thank you, I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Lisa?
I have nothing to discuss. Peter actually summarized it very nicely when he confirmed what was going on with the garage and that it would be in the same footprint, so I have no... I would approve at this point.
Thank you, Peter?
I'm normally a big stickler on the requirements for a variance and size, shape, topography, all that, but here I just think it's a distinction without a difference. They're rebuilding the structure basically in the same place, so I would tend to approve.
Thank you. Patrick?
I'm good.
Thank you. Paul?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. I, too, am all set. Let's move this forward to get a motion to approve variance for Section 7, Table 2, the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws and a special permit to construct a detached garage 27 and 2/10ths feet from the front yard setback and to construct a 16-foot by 16-foot addition on an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 21 Oak Street. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve as stated?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And Mary Beth, aye. So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to our next 6:30 hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Chad Borsey, 30 Adam Street, Worcester, Mass. Property is 9 Chartwell Circle in the Rural A District, and this is for a special permit to Section 6, Table 1, to construct an in-law apartment. The public hearing for 9 Chartwell Circle is a new public hearing. Could the applicant please introduce themselves and explain their application to the Board and to the public?
Good evening. My name is Chad Borsey. I'm the appellant for Laurie Ames, the owner. Pretty much she's just going with the existing footprint of her basement, and we're gonna add an in-law apartment for her mother. Her mother and father-in-law right now live in Worcester, and her father-in-law has cancer, and they're just, she's trying to get him to a place where she can help take care of them, and this is the best scenario for them. So there's not much changing in the home itself, or anything on the outside. We're just looking to add an in-law apartment. I've already applied for all the building permits, fire, and with you guys also.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. McAllister, do we have anything to add?
Just to remind the board that a waiver request to not submit a certified plot plan has been submitted due to the fact that, like the applicant said, there's no work being done outside. And then, also, just remind the board of the requirements for the in-law apartments. As stated in the common letter, but they shall not be occupied by more than two persons related by blood or marriage to the principal resident, and the special permission will be submitted only to the current ownership and occupancy of the premise. And I would suggest that the board consider adding those conditions as is typical for in-laws.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Okay. Let's work through the board, see if anyone has questions or comments. Let me start with Lisa, please.
I think I just have two questions. The... Is the garage egress already existing, or will you be adding that?
No. There's already a garage egress. There's two egresses, actually, out of the basement, two separate doors. One goes out the back, one goes into the garage, and then another one going up the stairs into the home itself. Everything is existing right now.
Okay, thank you. And the... I'm assuming you're here because you're adding a full kitchen, so with...
It's not going to be a full kitchen. It's just going to be a partial kitchen. There's going to be a refrigerator, a stove, but it's not going to be like a normal-sized kitchen, like upstairs, no.
Okay, but a cooking... Means of cooking, so a stove?
Yes, ma'am, yep.
Okay, I think that's it for me right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, any questions or comments?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, any questions or comments?
I'm good also.
Thank you. Paul, questions or comments?
I'm all set, thanks.
Thank you. I, too, am all set. So, being that it's a public hearing, are there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this matter? I'm going to give it a few seconds, see if anybody cares to add their voice. Okay. There being no public comments, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Need to close the hearing?
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye. Okay. Any comments from the board members? Lisa?
No, I have none.
Peter, any comments?
Nothing, nothing from me, very straightforward.
Thank you, Patrick?
I'm all set.
Thank you, Paul?
Nothing from me.
Okay, and there is nothing from me? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the waiver request for zoning board of appeals rules and regulations, Section 3? I'm sorry, Article 3, Section 3, to not provide a certified plot plan?
Need to approve the waiver?
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor. Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye. Do I get a motion... Can I get a motion to approve a special permit to construct an in-law apartment in a renovated basement of a single-family dwelling at 9 Chartwell Circle?
Need to approve as stated?
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Beth, aye. So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
You as well. Thank you, moving on to our next public hearing to hear the appeal of 163 LLC at 154 Newton Street in Weston, Mass. This is regarding 89 Colonial Drive, located in the Residence A District. This is for a variance of Section 7, Table 2, for frontage for a single-family dwelling. This is a public hearing for 89 Colonial Drive. For the applicant, please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board and to the public.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, for the record, my name is Richard Ricker, and I'm an attorney representing the applicants who are also with us on this video. This is a lot... This was originally Lot 62 of the original Colonial Drive subdivision, although it's number 89. It was an existing lot, and it was a valid lot for the eight years after the planning board approval of this subdivision. And it remained a valid lot for quite some time until we did make some changes with time to the zoning bylaw, most notably, in this particular case, the 25-foot utility easement. We can no longer use easement areas for frontage. And so, therefore, this easement is clearly a topographical problem for this lot, which is otherwise 1.7-acre lot. This lot, if you've driven down Colonial Drive, it's right at the very, very end of Colonial Drive. It has been cleared. It's gone through conservation approvals. It has gone through the stormwater management process, approval process. And so, this is the one obstacle. It's this topographical hardship, which is combined with the fact that Colonial Drive, at that particular end, if we were to try to build the roadway longer, it would be very, very, very difficult, if not impossible, because there is a very steep drop-off, as noted by the letter that you received from the planning department. There's a very steep drop-off, as well as potential wetlands and an intermittent stream down there. There is clearly topographical problems here and hardship, which is why we're in front of you. I would respectfully suggest to you that this is a request for a single-family house. It is, therefore, not a request that derogates from the intent of the bylaw. This was, at one stage, a permitted lot. It is clearly incidental only to this particular lot, because, as you can see, it's at the end of the roadway. It's the only potential lot that could be impacted in this particular way. So, it's clearly incidental to only this lot, and it is not causing or will not cause a nuisance, because, as we all know, as we all hope, single-family houses are not a nuisance in this town. The bottom line is that I would suggest to you that it's about as classic a hardship case as you can get for a variance request. I rarely see anything this classic. The easement impacting that frontage... If it wasn't for that easement, you'd have the frontage to do this. So, I would respectfully ask you to allow this to be used as a single-family residential lot. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Attorney Ricker.
Thank you.
Ms. McAllister, anything further to add?
I don't believe so, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Any board members have any questions or comments? Let's start with Lisa.
So, I have, I guess, a comment and a question. I'm really not a fan of these rear lots, if you will, and I think had the subdivision come before planning, you know, now, it would not be a buildable lot, or I wouldn't like it to be a buildable lot. However, I do understand that it, at the time, passed as a buildable lot. I have a question, I guess, about whoever was the owner at the time. I don't know if it's changed ownership over the years, but it was a... You say a valid, buildable lot for eight years or whatnot. Why... Just for curiosity, why didn't the owner at the time, and you may not know, do anything about this when the zoning law changes changed due to the easement not being considered frontage?
I don't know. This lot has been in... Until this owner, two years ago, it was in the... It was titled to the people that had actually developed the subdivision. And I think, for lack of any other explanation, I think it just got beyond them and didn't get built in time. There were, as you can see, there were 62 lots in this subdivision. It's quite a big subdivision, and it borders the town of Boylston. So, it stretches... It's essentially stretched a good part of Colonial Drive along the town of Boylston. So, I just don't know the answer to that, Lisa.
And to clarify, when the subdivision was the site plan approval and all of that occurred, the easement at that time would have been...
Okay.
Okay. And do you... When, again, was that zoning changed?
I think it was two or three years ago.
So, prior to the current ownership or some time around that, perhaps?
Probably around the same time.
I might have that, okay. All right, that's the only question I have at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Peter, any questions or comments?
Just a comment, I agree with Attorney Ricker's analysis completely. I think this is sort of a textbook example of a place where the variance makes sense based on the circumstances.
Thank you. Patrick, any questions or comments?
He's talking about a big drop-off in there. What is the big drop-off? Is that granite or...?
It's stone. It's stone boulders, and it just... This end of Colonial Drive was apparently filled. So, they stopped the filling at one stage, and it drops off. It drops off a good... I was down there this afternoon looking at it. It drops off a good 10 to 20 feet at the very end, and it's all large granite and granite boulders.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, if I may just interject real quickly. I would just like to note that even if the easement was allowed as frontage, they would still be shy five feet for a rear lot.
Five feet, thank you, that's what I was just looking for.
Even if they had... Even if we hadn't passed that two years ago, they would have 45 feet and not 50 feet needed for a rear lot. So, in terms of topographical hardship, they would be spending a good amount of money to get that extra five feet on a 10-foot drop. So, that's... I just wanted to make that very clear, so... I think Patrick kind of alluded to that.
But it was a valid lot.
Thank you. Patrick, are you still? Comments, questions?
No, I'm good.
Thank you. Paul, comments, questions?
Yeah, I think I have a little history of this lot. Wasn't this in front of us a little while back, maybe a couple of years ago?
I don't know.
Yeah, it was. And we gave him approval on this lot because of the... It's something to do with the highway, and they did some land-taking. So, we approved it with those conditions. And so, I just wonder why he never moved forward to do anything with this lot, knowing that somewhere down the road there could be a change in zoning or something of this matter.
Gee, I don't know, Paul. I just don't know. I wasn't aware that it was in front of you before.
Well, I think maybe Bernie... Would you have any information on that?
That's the first I've heard that it was in front of the board previously. I'm not saying you're wrong. It's possible someone else was staffing ZBIA at the time.
I sat on the hearing.
What's that?
I know I sat on the hearing.
Yeah, no, no, I believe you for sure.
I'm sure you did.
I have not received any information as to why they didn't act upon the previous approval.
So, I sat on that, too, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And I believe it was the previous owners, not who owns it now, who is appealing to us at this point, so... And I don't think it's relevant to what's being asked of us today, in my opinion.
Thank you. Paul?
No, I'm all set.
You're all set? Thank you. Richard, just a couple of questions. Just can you clarify that it's a drainage easement? Is that correct?
It's a utility easement. There's a drainage easement on the right-hand side that impacts this as well. But the utility easement is directly in the so-called neck of the lot. But there's a drainage easement pressing in from the right-hand side as well.
Okay.
And you can see that stone culvert there, that's within the drainage easement. That's on the right-hand side as you're looking up that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Public water, public sewer?
Public water, public sewer, as far as I know. Bernie? I believe it is. It's a 1.7 acre lot, in any event. So even if it wasn't public sewer, you'd be able to sewer it.
I can't speak to sewer, but I believe water, for sure.
Yeah, well, there's a, yeah, there's a pump station there, so.
Okay. Thank you. Being that this is a public hearing, I'd like to open it up for public comments. Going to give a few minutes to see if anybody's out there that would like to be heard on this. Okay. Going once, twice. Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close?
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you all in favor. Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, this is, I'm sorry about that. I was trying to figure out how to unmute myself.
Thank you. Can you please state your name for the record?
Sure, my name is Chuba, Chuba Ambanemi, and I live on Colonial Drive.
Can you give us your address, please?
Eighty-five Colonial.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. Can you help me understand what is a utility easement?
Certainly. Attorney Ricker, could you?
Sure. If I could, Madam Chair, a utility easement is an area of land within which utilities run. For instance, water, sewer, electric utilities. Typically, in a subdivision such as this, the utilities would be underground. So therefore, the utility easements are established in order to establish an area where there will be no digging without very specific care and permits. And it's an area that is set aside for those utilities to remain for as long as usually the subdivision. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, I'm going to give a second, just in case there is someone else out there. Star six to unmute.
My name is Paul Taviano, eighty-seven Colonial Drive. I'm the immediate neighbor.
I'm sorry, Paul, what was your address?
Eighty-seven Colonial Drive.
Eighty-seven, thank you.
Yeah. I just want to state that, you know, we really do not have a problem with this. We were always, I've been here almost thirty years, we were under the intention that this always was a buildable lot. So just wanted to put that on the record, that we, we don't have a problem with this being built.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taviano. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in attendance that wishes to be heard? You can, star six. Let me give a couple of seconds. Okay. All right. I think we've given enough time. I certainly hope we have. Okay, so can we start discussion, please? Lisa?
I have nothing further to add. I would, I'm in a position to approve.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
I think hearing from the immediate neighbor makes it an easier decision.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
No, I already made my comments earlier.
Thank you, Paul. I would simply comment that I appreciate Mr. George's ability to have unbelievably good recall on these things, so that's very helpful. Thank you. For an old guy, you're doing pretty well.
Thanks a lot, Mary Beth.
I'm kidding you.
I resemble that remark, "old."
Okay. Calling this meeting to order. If there's no further objections, I'd like to get a motion to approve a variance for Section seven B, Table two, to allow for the construction of a single-family dwelling on a rear lot with twenty feet of frontage at eighty-nine Colonial Drive. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve as stated.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa? Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
No.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving along to our next six-thirty hearing. To hear the appeal of Patricia Malidio at twenty-eight Topsfield Circle in a Residence A District. This is for a variance to Section seven C, to construct a shed closer than ten feet from the property line. Public hearing for twenty-eight Topsfield is a new public hearing. Could the applicant please introduce themselves and explain the application to the board and to the public?
Hi, this is Patricia Malidio. So we basically want to put a shed on the side of our yard. We want to put it there because we hope to put a built-in pool, you know, more in the middle of the backyard. So we also have a one-car garage, which is, you know, built underneath the first floor of the house, so it's built into the house. We want to put the shed where we noted on the plot plan, because it's actually, you know, closer to the garage where we can switch over the lawn mowers and snowboards and things like that. So the hardship is just the size of the yard. The whole property's on a third of an acre, so it's not terribly big. And we don't believe this would be detrimental or cause a public nuisance, and that we find it consistent with actually our adjoining neighbors. And I sent them, I don't know if you've got them, a couple of photos, exhibits for you to see, that show our shed and the neighbor's shed. And it seems to be, we feel consistent with other sheds in the neighborhood that, you know, don't seem set in ten feet from their property, side yards and backyard.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Is there anything further to add on this?
I'll just sum it up, I suppose. This is a variance application to build a shed with a side yard setback of less than ten feet, as shown in these plans. As the applicant stated, this lot is on the smaller side. It does not meet the minimum lot required, or lot area of twenty thousand square feet, and it is a little short on frontage as well. The board will also note that a waiver request to not provide a certified plot plan was submitted due to time expensive for procuring the plan. But the board should also just be aware of the building department's comments that a certified plot plan should be required due to potential problems with future enforcement if the setbacks are not clearly defined. So I believe that is all I have for you. I'm happy to change the presentation as needed.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Let's go through the board and see if there's any questions or comments. Let's start with Lisa, please.
So I have to say, I'm normally against these types of requests, but I've denied them on much larger lots, or I should just say larger lots. So I would ask my fellow board members to help me see otherwise. So I'll leave it at that, and I may have more questions or comments.
Peter, would you like to jump in?
Yeah, I think I share the same reservations. I mean, under Thirty A, Section ten, you know, the standard for, a hardship doesn't include the size of the lot. And ten feet isn't a huge distance to go from the side yard. I understand it might be more convenient to have it closer to the fence or closer to the garage. But, you know, the other piece of the hardship aspect is it's supposed to be something that's unique about your lot versus other lots in the area. And it looks to me like most of the lots in the area are basically the same size and shape. They're all pretty square, they're all pretty flat. So I'm not sure that the statutory requirement is met here. flip side of that for me is the shed. It's not like a big addition or a garage or something like that, so I don't know. But the harm is great, especially considering the fairness aspect of the fact that it looks like lots of other sheds in the neighborhood are pretty close to the line. So I'm kind of in a similar position, at least, I could kind of go either way at this point.
Patrick, any comments, questions?
What is the reason for not having a certified plot plan?
Ms. Malidio? I think you just muted yourself.
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yeah, it's merely, I got this plot plan from the town probably like twenty years ago when I moved in, and it's merely a financial impact right now to, you know, be able to pay for it. I think they're about twelve hundred dollars we were quoted. And not that it really matters, but I am losing my job this Friday. So with the, you know, COVID, and it's just spending that amount of money right now has us a little concerned. And we just thought with, you know, the neighbor's shed being right there as well, that, you know, with their fence being there for twenty years and things like that, that the property was kind of well-defined.
Madam Chair, can I make one comment?
Yes, please.
Keep going around. So I feel for the appellant and the fact that the neighbor has a shed right on the property line. It doesn't mean, however, that they should have done that, and it doesn't unfortunately bear anything on your request for, you know, we consider each appeal and each lot separately. And I looked at those pictures, and I wouldn't have allowed something like that either. But that's just my opinion. So that's all I wanted to say about that one.
Thank you. Who have I forgotten? Paul, comments?
Just wondering if there's any way of cutting down the size of the building, the shed, to make it conform?
Ms. Malidio?
I'm sorry. You want to know what? I didn't quite hear you.
I was just wondering if there's a way of cutting down the size of the shed to make it conform?
To move it ten feet out?
Or to just to adjust the shape of it, or whatever, just to make it conform to the side yard setback? Is this shed already built?
Sort of. I mean, it's not completed.
That's a pretty big fact for me, I think, also.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, Lisa?
To confirm, a nine-by, a nine-point-nine foot by twenty-foot shed is already in existence, and we're being asked for the variance to allow its current placement, essentially. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And Paul, Mr. George's question was, is there, do you think it's feasible to change the construction of the nine-point-nine foot by twenty-foot shed so that it can be ten feet from the property line?
Other than the expense of it, I don't know if I have an answer on that.
So, I think I want to clarify it a little bit. Maybe there's a picture that you gave us in our Google Drive, and we could show it. Is the twenty-foot dimension of the shed what goes along the neighboring property?
Yeah.
So that's parallel to the neighboring property, the twenty-foot part? So, Mr. George, I believe the answer to that question would be to move the shed over. Well, the shed could be moved over, perhaps. Don't know how easy that would be. I guess you'd have to use PVC rollers or something. But to change, if it stayed in its current position, I guess it would have to be less width. So instead of nine feet, it would be, yeah, I don't know. I don't think it's possible.
I'm just wondering how we got to this position of going for a variance? How was this, how did this come about?
Madam Chair, I can speak to that.
Yes, please, Rowan.
So we did, I believe, receive a complaint from the neighbor regarding the water dripping on to, from the partially constructed shed on to their property. And that is how the non-conformity was brought to our attention.
Yeah, I think they started at a point where the wood hadn't been cut, because on Exhibit B, you can see that it doesn't hang over on to theirs.
Ms. McAllister, can we see Exhibit B? Thank you.
So is the measurement to the property line from the overhang or from the foundation?
We don't know.
The measurement is from the foundation of my house to the shed.
I'm sorry, I may have not cleared the, on the measured, on the drawing that you provided, is the distance from the shed to the property line measured from the overhang of the shed as it's currently constructed, or the foundation of the shed is currently constructed? My point is if it's two nine feet from the property line at the foundation, the overhang would appear to be near or at the property line, which is a different number, and that factors in for me.
Yeah, so Exhibit B, the shed, my shed is, what, thirty-six inches from their shed?
The property line? How far is it from the property line? And measuring from the roof line or from the foundation?
The foundation.
Okay, so the overhang looks like it's a footer cell anyway? So is it really, is the edge of the building really about a foot from the property line?
I need, you need to help me with this. What's the overhang? Is that, how big is the overhang? So like a foot, he said.
Okay, so it's about a foot maybe from the property line then? And then, and just so I understand, because I guess I didn't realize this context. And to this began construction without permits, is that basically what happened? And now we're looking to have a variance for something that's already mostly constructed?
It was just that, I think, when the neighbor saw it, the over, it was before I cut the overhang back, I just run the boards down, and then I snapped the line and cut them. So I think when he called, it was when the boards were all running wild by. That's why he called. But they're all cut back, and it looks right now. I think that's what happened.
I'm not asking about that so much, it's just whether construction started without a permit, is what I was wondering.
I didn't need a permit at all, because it was under two hundred square feet. It was just the placement of it, you mean?
Well, I mean, you're here for a variance, so. It sounds like you couldn't have built it without coming to us first.
Okay. Ms. McAllister, do you have something? Looks like you have something to add.
Well, thanks. I'm just trying to follow. I believe, and if Bernie's still available, he can back me up, but I believe that the shed does not need a building permit. It is just that it's too close and does not conform to those side yard setbacks.
Thank you.
Okay. I think I'd like to hear a public comment if I could. Any other comments from the board?
I have one other question, Madam Chairman.
Yes, Paul.
The other shed that was in that picture, does that conform?
The neighbor's shed?
Yeah.
No, that's right on the line. It's a foot off of their line, so.
A foot in?
Yeah, it's a foot in from their line. We were just going back-to-back with them.
So if that shed is a foot in off the property line, you're only probably two feet away from the property line, what your shed?
We're three and a half feet, well, we're two and a half feet from ours and a foot off of his. Three and a half feet from his shed, yes.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Given that this is a public hearing, I'd like to open the meeting up to public comments, if there's anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter. Star six, it will unmute you, and you can have the floor. Anybody? Okay. So in order for the board to determine whether or not to close or continue the hearing, we'll need to discuss whether we will consider the waiver request to not provide a certified plot plan. And if it appears that the board will not approve the waiver, I would recommend that we continue the hearing.
Madam Chairman, might I interject? Just added a thought to that process. So I think really the board, what it's looking at is, well, to your point, it has to consider the waiver for not submitting a certified plot plan. But then you also have to ask yourself, even if a certified plot plan were to be submitted at some cost to the owner-applicant, would you still be in favor? In other words, does it, or is it going to change your mind? In other words, if a certified plot plan's submitted, you know it's going to be roughly two and a half to three feet, something like that, within the ten feet. Is it going to change your mind? So before the board, you know, puts the appellant through additional costs of getting a certified plot plan, does it make a difference? So I think that needs to be sorted out before the next step can be made. And then, depending on that answer, you would either close or continue based on what you think the answer to that question is, if that makes sense. All right, that's all I wanted to say, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I would like to discuss the waiver of the plot plan.
Yes, let's, let's close the public hearing first.
No, so I don't think you want to close. In this case, you, you don't want to close the public hearing right away. I know it's a little unusual. Um, but because of this waiver request, I think that needs to be sorted out before you close. Because once it's closed, you can't continue. You can continue to deliberate in the future, but the applicant can't submit you new information.
Got it, okay.
So, just very carefully weigh the, the waiver question, and again, whether it's going to sway you one way or another. Once that's resolved, I think you can then decide.
Okay. Lisa, what would, uh, you like to add about waivers or?
So I would, uh, I would approve the waiver request. I don't believe the appellant needs to get a certified plot plan for me to, uh, rule on this decision. I don't think seeing that the shed is exactly two and a half feet from the property line is going to help me approve it. That's where I'm standing on the waiver.
Anyone else? Peter?
I would just say I, I lean no on the overall question. I think if other people are inclined to approve, I would want, um, a certified plot plan because of, for enforcement purposes, not anything. I said it's already built, but just to have a complete record. But I, I tend to lean no in general.
And I do as well, if that's not obvious.
Yeah, Madam, Madam Chair, sorry. Going to keep interjecting tonight. Um, I don't think the board members even need to make it clear which way they're going to vote. Just whether or not, uh, and a submitted certified plot plan is going to change your mind either way.
Right.
And then once that's sorted out, then you can decide to close. In other words, if your decision's going to be what it is, then, and this waiver doesn't matter to you, then, then you can go ahead and close. Um, if you feel that it would change your mind, then you might consider, uh, continuance. So, sorry, Madam Chair, back to you and the other members of the board.
Okay, um, Patrick, can I get your weigh-in on this?
I just, uh, want to go and have one question about the shed. Is there, is there a foundation on that shed?
No.
Okay.
And with regard to the certified plot plan, where's your head out on this one, Patrick?
Um, uh, I'm with, uh, Lisa right now.
So it would not change your opinion whether we had it or not?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Paul?
Uh, it wouldn't change my opinion one way or another.
Right. I feel the same way. I, I don't know that a certified plot plan is going to change my opinion either. So, um, I do not think we have to continue this matter. Um, is that a correct statement? Yes, okay. Um, so can I get a motion to close the public hearing here?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And, uh, Mary Beth, aye. Okay, so can we have some deliberation on this matter? Start with Lisa.
Uh, so I don't believe there is a hardship that would help me approve this variance. The size of the lot is perhaps, um, something I might have thought about, but, um, the, the, uh, frontage already, so the house is pushed more towards the front of the yard, so, um, they already are not within the current front yard setback, I guess. So I, my feeling is, and I know it's unfavorable, and I know it may be a pain, but I have moved a shed before, and this is a large one, I know, but I would, uh, I would hope the appellant can move the shed 10 feet away from the proper, property line, or maybe toward the back of the property so that they can still get the pool that they're hoping for. So I'm, uh, in a position to deny.
Okay. Um, Peter, can I hear from you?
I, I seem nothing to add, uh, to this.
Thank you. Patrick?
I agree with Lisa.
Okay, Paul?
I feel if the, uh, owner did some due diligence before they started the process of building the shed, we wouldn't be in this position right now.
Right. And I feel, having done a drive-by, when I saw that the shed was already built, um, that's where the question becomes asking for permission or forgiveness. It's really, this is a tough one, so.
I think, can I just say something?
Uh, meeting is, I'm, I'm sorry, but the meeting is closed at this point. Sorry. So can I get a motion to deny the variance for Section 7C to construct a shed no less than two and four tenths feet from the side yard setback?
Motion to deny, as stated.
Can I get a second?
So, second.
All in favor, Lisa?
Aye of denying.
Peter?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So moved.
I can't ask a question?
I'm sorry, the meeting is closed.
Can I go to the town hall and ask one?
Yes, you certainly can. That's what they're there for. Absolutely. And we'll, we'll try to help you as best we can.
I just was going to ask, what if their shed falls down? Do they get to rebuild it there?
So that's a question that we'll have to take up at a different time. We need to move on to our next scheduled meeting. Okay. Thank you. Next, 6:30 hearing. Uh, this is to hear the appeal of Christopher Lund, 235 Cherry Street, for 230 Cherry Street located in a limited industrial zone. This is the appeal of the decision of the building inspector, Section 9B1. The appellant appeals the following alleged determinations of the building inspector. One, that site plan approval by the planning board is not required for the property. Two, that the use of the property has not expanded to the detriment of the neighborhood. Three, that the use of the property for service and repairs is allowed as of right. Four, that the use of the property for sale of construction equipment does not require a special permit. And five, the use of the property for the sale of automobiles is allowed as of right. The public hearing for 230 Cherry Street is a new public hearing. I will first ask the applicant to introduce theirself and explain the application to the board. I will then ask the representatives of 230 Cherry Street to respond to the appellant's comments, followed by any commentary by the town council, town planner, or the building inspector. As with all public hearings before the board, all questions from the appellant, landowners, or public are to be asked through me, the chair. Could the appellant please introduce themselves and explain their application to the board?
Yes, my name's Christopher Lund. I live at 235 Cherry Street. And I can begin, uh, explaining our, our, what we're appealing. Um, I know there was a lot of documents, uh, sent on our, on behalf of this appeal. Um, I, I guess what's best is to kind of go document by document because it hits on the different aspects of what's going on there. Um, basically, um, we've been, uh, appealing the zoning determination of that lot since May. Um, back in May, that property, um, the, the business on that property received a, a Class 1 dealership license through the Board of Selectmen based on, uh, a zoning decision, uh, by the zoning enforcement officer. Uh, in an email I sent to you folks, I attached that April 13th zoning enforcement email relative to the determination that they could move forward with the license back in May. Uh, and in that enforcement letter, it was stated by Patty Sheehan, the zoning enforcement officer, that appears that a dealer plate is needed for demo, uh, demonstration of the equipment, and that equipment is not sold at the property. Uh, this is documented. No application from ZBA is required. That was in the, uh, 413 zoning enforcement email sent to you folks. Um, for seven months, uh, we filed four zoning complaints against that property uh, for the stated uses in our application. Uh, the, the fact that they were selling, uh, construction equipment on site, uh, and so on and so forth. And we did not get one reply back, uh, from those zoning, uh, formal zoning enforcement complaints, uh, except, uh, we were getting response from Patty Sheehan. However, um, the response was that it was going up to the manager's office. Uh, those four complaints went on over the course of seven months. Between Complaints 3 and Complaints 4, lo and behold, the, uh, property owner applied for a building permit, uh, which we were not made aware of, uh, and that was done November 25th. Uh, finally, the only official response we got back from the town on that property was on the December 4th email from the manager, the town manager. And, uh, in the copy I, I provided for you folks, again, this is the only official interpretation of why, uh, they were allowed to move forward after our complaints. Um, and I highlighted certain parts of Mr. Mizikar's email, uh, his office, uh, he stated that his office had been working uh, with the, um, business owner and the property owner. Uh, he wrote, "My office has been working, uh, to come to a solution that ensures compliance within the town zoning bylaws and retains business presence within the town for the economic benefit of everyone. We have come to resolution with the business and property owner at the site, uh, and the site will be screened." Excuse me. Um, I'll skip to the last two sentences here. Um, so he states, "As clearly stated and documented when the business began operations, this is an allowable use, uh, for that business zone." And then he finishes with, "The license enables their business operations, but," and I quote, "they are not operating a motor vehicle dealership." So, over the course of the same, uh, seven months, we didn't get responded to, but his letter uh, references a meeting he had with the business owner and the property owner and his involvement to, to coax the site plan, uh, to come up with what they felt was a resolution. So, the building permit was subsequently approved, and we finally, uh, appealed through ZBA against the, the, the uses going on at the property. And, um, I'm going to start with the, um, I guess I'll go to the garage and repair evidence I provided to the board. Uh, it's obvious that their, their internet presence regarding, um, their garage and repair service capabilities at the property are, uh, uh, right there on the internet. You can see what the Google search came up with, and that Shoesbury is the location. Then, uh, and I'm referencing NICO. There's two companies operating from this location. For that Alan Hammersley letter I also provided to you folks where he states that. Uh, NICO as well as JCB Northland are both operating from the same location as separate companies. So, uh, coming back to my garage and repair evidence, the first part is about the fact that NICO, in their internet presence, um, state that they're doing service and repair. Uh, it's, then I specifically pull up the section that they service all their equipment. Then I go on to show you that JCB Northland has an internet presence for service at the Shoesbury location. Yes.
Can I ask you just a quick question? Would it be helpful to share any of these visually with the group? Is there any need for that?
I, I, I would defer to the, to the board. If you would like to, uh, put that up on the screen and, and we can walk through it. If you have questions, uh, relative to it, I'd be happy to answer. Or I.
I think it might be helpful to, um, just to move things along and to be sure that we're seeing everything, if we could do that. Ms. McCallister, can you take care of that?
Yes. Would you mind, uh, we're on, would you just mind stating the name of the documents when you move on to the next one?
Sure. So the first one is ZBA dash garage and repair evidence. Peter? Yeah, so there it is. Uh, page one shows you, uh, what the Google search comes up with relative to NICO. Um, then it rolls right on to the actual Nick, uh, excerpts from the actual NICO website relative to material handling equipment and also, uh, electric and, um, gas vehicle service. Uh, then the next page, page two, uh, here's where, this is a quote from their website. Uh, "All used material handling equipment is inspected and serviced." Um, you can see it's stated there a couple times. Uh, then moving on to now the JCB Northland side of the business operating out of that location. Uh, this is the Google presence, uh, when you do a search for JCB Northland, pointing out that, uh, they come up as service. And then again, on the next page, when you look at excerpts from their website, I point arrows at what their dealer services are in that they rent and service equipment. So if you're renting, uh, construction equipment, uh, you're obviously taking that equipment back in. You're repairing it and servicing it, uh, oil changes and whatnot or whatever for the next use. Uh, then it, I show you in the URL links that, uh, you can click on dealer locations, for example, and Shoesbury clearly comes up as a dealer location. Construction plan, that references the building plans that are on file, uh, with the permit system in Shoesbury. Uh, it clearly shows an enlarged overhead door at the loading ramp location. And, uh, those pictures are, the GIS pictures are the change from 2015. You can see the parking lot's fairly empty to then the, the imagery from 2019 where there's a lot of equipment all over the parking lot. And, uh, take note of the, kind of the bottom right corner, close to the yellow line. All the equipment there is on the grass uh, so that they could get in and out of the parking lot. And then next is my, uh, all my photos, uh, taken since May. You can see JCB Northland equipment. You can see street sweepers. Uh, you can see flatbeds coming and going, pulling equipment out of the facility. Um, walls, uh, you name it. Um, pneumatic tire forklifts. You can clearly see they're used equipment. There's new equipment. Um, this product is coming and going constantly from this facility. Uh, the facility does not have a showroom. It's a warehouse with a ramp and an overhead door. It's obvious that this equipment shows up weekly. It's brought in, it's given repair, and it's brought out and shipped back to a, a customer or wherever. So, those are all the photos. And I got more photos on the next page of, uh, I mean, just take note, uh, I guess on that 10-5-20-20 photo, for example, all that equipment on the left side. All that equipment on the left side is clearly on the grass. Flatbeds again. And just a ton of pictures relative to a lot of equipment coming and going out of the facility. So that's part of my comments on what I provided as evidence. You can go on to the next page, it's just kind of a summary. Of garage. I provide the definition and the Shoesbury bylaws, whether it's being serviced or repaired. It's stored in the building, serviced and repaired its garage. And it just kind of, this page just summarizes all the evidence. Okay, if we want to move from that document, unless anybody has any questions. No? Let's do the automobile sales evidence next, if we could, Ms. McAllister. Okay, kind of formatted the same exact way. We have, the purpose of this document is to kind of. Point out the Polaris sales at the locations. Polaris equipment, and I'm gonna show you what that means in the document, but again, when you do a Google search. This comes up as a Polaris dealer. Under NICCO. As well as JCB Northland. And at the bottom of this page, you can see a reference to the NICCO website and their reference. Or their webpage on Gem by Polaris Utility Vehicles. And their passenger vehicles are like a golf cart, those kinds of things. Next page is the JCB Northland website. In the bottom corner of the main page, you can see titled Polaris. And when you click on that, the next piece is what shows. You can clearly see Pro XD gas and diesel Polaris equipment, Gem Passenger Vehicles, Gem Utility Vehicles. And there's, you can scroll through and see all sorts of vehicles that are for sale. Next page. So Gem, or I'm sorry, Polaris. The, then it caused me to look through my library of photos to see if I caught any of that material. Cause I, to be honest with you, back in May, June, I wasn't intent on finding Polaris equipment. It was more, we were documenting because of our zoning complaints, all the equipment of various types that were on the property. But yet, sure enough, we had picked up on some Polaris equipment. This one shows the back end that, that kind of open bodied rear end to a Polaris. And then the next.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I wonder if I might interrupt Mr. Lund for a minute with a question?
Yeah.
So I. I understand from what you filed with the board that your concern appears to be that the. Property owner is using the property for things that are in their interpretation beyond what the property is zoned for. Which is a zoning enforcement issue, obviously. How does that sort of, what's the relationship between that complaint, if that's a fair statement of it? And the relief that the property owner has for?
The, the relationship to my complaint with the relief of the property owner? I don't, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm trying, I guess I'm trying to understand what exactly it is that you're asking us.
So, okay, so what I'm asking the zoning board of appeals is the building. A building permit was issued for a large renovation to occur at the facility. Based on a zoning interpretation that there was no, that the use on the property was. In accordance with a limited industrial zone. And I'm clearly showing that the uses are not in line with the limited industrial zone. And that those uses were not being conveyed properly by the owner of the business. Does that clarify?
That's helpful and then, and there, in the property owner's response, they said basically that they don't intend to. Do any of those things going forward. Does that change your request at all, or would you suggest that we don't credit that, or what's your sort of response?
So my response to that is, is, we've been hit with a lot of. In my opinion, that type of a statement is, is a statement. It's kind of like the wolf watching the hen house. You know, I have, I have some, the person who wants all the, the building permits in that use to stay. And not be looked at or scrutinized, telling us that. I, I'm not doing that, we promised we won't do that. And that's all I've heard through the, through the last bunch of months, and that's all I heard at the Board of Selectmen meeting. And they've stated that in documents, however, I've also captured. The other side where they've stated in documents that they are a dealership. And then I'm showing that they clearly are selling equipment and servicing equipment at that site. And it ties into another property, two sixty Cherry Street on the corner of Cherry and Route twenty as well. And so in my opinion, I really am not a fan or in favor of going by what. They want to tell me that they're gonna do, because to date, they haven't demonstrated that at all.
And I hope you don't mind my interrupting, you've obviously done a ton of work on this and put a lot of information together, I just wanted to make sure I was, I was sort of following it.
And I appreciate that and in our opinion, the other part of this is that. They've stated right along, and frankly, it's the town that stated right along that they're not a dealership. And they've been. At this location under that guise, that they're not. This whole thing about dealer plates back in May. And their need to have, to have. The display out by the street was that we're demonstrating for customers on site, we're not doing any of this at the property. But just recently, just today or this afternoon, and I can get to it, even the attorney. Letter that was provided that I highlighted clearly shows through the last page, which is NICCO's. Own comments on what they're doing there, that they've been right along in full service mode over at this property. So my contention here is that we're going from the notion that there was none of that occurring. And that's why they were, they did not need any variances or special permits. And now. In light of the building permit, we are now going from no to now. We're recognizing that there is absolutely service that still is being proposed as part of this renovation. They're expanding their overhead door to even larger size. And they don't have a showroom and they intend to bring equipment in per their own documentation provided by the. Attorney Donahue earlier this afternoon, just on. On a different scale, but it's going from a no use to now a use. And we're pushing to have the right zoning interpretation done at this location. Does that help?
Madam Chairman?
Thank you, yes.
Can I ask a question to Mr. Lund, please?
Certainly, Mr. Paul.
Is that.
Or Mr. George, sorry.
A C B and NICCO the same company?
No.
Are they separate companies?
They're two separate companies per the. Letter I provided by Alan Hammersley, the president and CEO of their companies. In it, he clearly states, I have a copy of it, I know I sent you folks, but on the second to last paragraph. He clearly states, it is important to realize that NICCO and Northland JCB will continue to operate as separate companies. And the current team members will remain unchanged. Additionally, we foresee no expected changes in our business operating procedures.
Well, I know a while back, we granted a variance to JCB for the display of those vehicles out in front. So evidently, they were selling vehicles at their property.
I'm gonna correct that if you, if you don't mind. It was a special permit issued at two sixty Cherry Street, which is a different lot. Two sixty Cherry Street received a special permit for a showroom. For construction equipment, which they never built. And it then got accessory. Structures built. Based on that special permit for a sales room. The accessory structures were a freestanding sign, a gravel pad and displays of six, up to six construction vehicles. I think Ms. McAllister is pulling up that decision itself, if I might stop, we're at findings number three. It states right there.
Same property, sorry.
No, that's two sixty Cherry Street. And it states that the, the special permit request is for a sales room of construction equipment. You can see in item four, that that equipment is coming from two thirty Cherry Street. And then your decision on the next page, or I should say the ZBA's decision. Clearly shows that the decision was based on section six, table one, the use table. For that said, sales room. The sales room was never built eight years ago, and it's been eight years since that decision was made. So subsequent to this meeting, we are asking that that special permit be revoked. And why is it required at two sixty Cherry Street for JCB Northland, but not required at two thirty Cherry Street? Where the actual equipment in the business operates? It doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay. Mr. Lund? We're into this for, I want to give you as much time as you need, but I also want to try to move this along if there's.
So that's two of my three documents, I have, I think we've stated enough about the automobile stuff. Document three is the construction equipment evidence, the same formatted document. Where we see, and you know, I can. Brush through this quickly, I'm assuming we're all getting the gist of this, that they have an internet presence. I've clearly documented all of that, I've clearly documented the, that equipment on site. And right up until current time, out in the parking lot, coming and going out of the building in the photographs attached. So I won't. Go through this page by page, I don't know that I have to. In this evidence page, I also state the bit about the special permit required at two sixty Cherry Street, but not two thirty Cherry Street. I might get us out of this and move to the attorney's letter. That was presented to the board. And I might ask Ms. McAllister to bring us right down to the NICCO letter. Dated January twenty first, two thousand twenty one, which is the last page. Here. The executive VP for NICCO. Clearly states that they are currently a full service shop performing minor and major repair work. That is absolutely prohibited in a limited industrial zone. It was stated right up until now that this is not occurring at this facility and that's why no ZBA caring was required. They, they supplied rental units for various customer needs. They store that equipment. On site in the building. Equipment, again, references to the equipment that they service is powered by liquid propane. Industrial batteries, gasoline powered units as well. Then I'll move you right down to item three, where they state that as of April first, two thousand twenty one. New and used equipment. Will still be stored on site. It's not that it's not gonna be stored in the building, it is still gonna be stored in the building. And that rental equipment prep will occur. Being in construction my whole life, I can tell you rental equipment prep is. Oil changes, hydraulic fluids, all the things necessary to keep equipment running as you change it from one user to the next. Number seven. Minor new equipment prep and rental prep, all referenced again. Number eight. This is a different point of contention, the use of the evaporator for the steam bay runoff will be significantly reduced. This evaporator. Is they, they clean forklifts and different types of equipment inside that facility. And then the runoff is brought into an evaporator piece of equipment where they cook off the water. That was our complaints earlier in the two thousands. Because of the smell that comes off of that is outrageous. And. Again, the use is going to be reduced, not eliminated, they still intend on providing that service to equipment. Inside that facility. And all I can tell you is that the large amount of warehouse they still plan on having. With an enlarged overhead door, all speaks to all sorts of equipment being worked on inside the building. Even larger equipment than what they had before. So this is. You know, I'd like an opportunity, I guess, to respond to any other comments as we go along here and take a break for a little bit for everybody. But this is all our evidence regarding. Used construction equipment sales being, occurring on site and intending on continuing. Service and repair continuing on. Occurring as well as automobile. Stuff that's classified as automobile, the part I left, I had in the automobile evidence. In the Shoesbury zoning laws includes all terrain vehicles. That's listed, that's, so. I'll yield to the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lund. May I ask the, I believe attorney Donahue is here to represent property owner?
That's right, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark Donahue from Fletcher Tilton on behalf of Toledo Development Corporation. With me this evening to answer your questions is Ken Toledo, Toledo Development. And I believe that there are also representatives of NICCO. I hope at least Rick Papalia and Alan Hammersley might be on also to try to answer your questions. Mr. Lund has thrown a lot at you that needs to be unpacked. And it needs to be put in the context of why you're here tonight. Not why he has been apparently. Communicating and raising and having issues with any number of town officials with regard to this particular property. And the reason it's important is his decision to appeal the building permit C dash twenty dash twenty seven. As opposed to when he received a zoning enforcement email that he referred to of April thirteenth. Appealing that enforcement decision of the building inspector. Both procedures fall into the same state statute of chapter forty eight, section seven. But it's important to know that as to the matters of uses. Those have administrative remedies that he must seek first before coming to the zoning board of appeals. While the appeal is appropriately before you on the building permit. But it is on the building permit that the appeal lies, it is not on the general use in which it lies. And therefore, his appeal must be tied inextricably to what that building permit seeks. The building permit in question, which he represents to you as a major renovation, is far from that. The building permit in question has two primary components. It creates a demising wall, taking the large area currently occupied by NICCO. And creating two separate areas, dramatically decreasing the square footage occupied by NICCO. And creating a new space to be leased to a new tenant within the area. And we provided to the board as part of my correspondence, a description of that work, so you would have it for your information. He asserts that that building permit should not have issued for that demising wall and lavatory for two reasons. He asserted, and he's bound by his application for appeal, not everything he's talked about for the last nine months with the town. He's bound by the application he filed that came to the property owner. He asserts that the permit should not have been issued because site plan approval is required. He asserts that that the permit should not have been issued because site plan approval is required. It is not the practice nor procedure, nor is it consistent with the zoning bylaw in Shrewsbury, that site plan approval is required to for interior renovations only of an industrial building. At the very most, it would be his administrative site plan approval by the building inspector. It would not fall under the purview of the planning board as defined in section seven F of the zoning bylaw for site plan approval. That is an important distinguishing factor because there is no appeal granted to your board on administrative site plan approval. It's only an appeal to your board of a decision by the planning board on site plan approval. So his appeal of building permit twenty dash C dash twenty dash twenty seven as to the site plan uh needs to fail. In other forums, he hasn't raised it this evening, but he uh has raised in other forums that there was work done to the building back in two thousand twelve that should require a modification of the site plan. Since he didn't raise it, I'm going to assume he's given up the ghost on it, but put that aside. Um what the applicant has decided, what the owner has decided to do uh as requested is to prepare uh an updated site plan of the exterior of the property, uh identifying the the uh necessary criteria, file it as discussed with Mr. Cahill, as a site plan modification for the site plan that was issued originally when the building was constructed. And submit that to the planning board, so there'll be a record as to the exterior matters particularly that relate to site plan approval. And we expect that that will proceed before the planning board in February and March of this year, and we'll be following that through. So the grounds for uh asking you to overturn the decision of the building inspector and granting this these uh building permit in question for the failure to site have site plan approval, I think have to fall on their uh by their own terms. The second argument he tries to make is the one he's just made to you, in that somehow NICO is outside the bounds of what it's permitted to do. And therefore, the building permit to separate the space and put in the lavatory should have been dismissed. I suggest to the board that since he has decided to appeal the building permit, he's bound by those uh actions that basically relate to and are precipitated from the issuance of the building permit. And here in this particular case, that really falls against Mr. Lund's argument because the area to be occupied within two thirty Cherry Street by NICO is being significantly reduced as a result of their rightsizing of their business and using other forms and other places they have. I'm going to introduce uh the the members of NICO in a minute to give you better color. But a an awful lot of Mr. Lund's uh investigative research here involves internet uh examination of what's available on the internet. NICO has a number of different locations. It's a larger company. For example, the what the letter he referred to you in which they were tried to tie together the J C B wasn't a letter addressed to the town of Shrewsbury. It wasn't a letter addressed to Mr. Lund, who was a letter addressed to customers telling them about business changes back in two thousand nineteen. It's a large company. Its internet presence is trying to attract customers as anybody's internet presence. It isn't trying to to couch it within the terms and conditions of the zoning bylaw in Shrewsbury. Looking forward, what the uh letter I think that Mr. Lund referred to, that we attended to our cor- our correspondence, shows that the primary use of the property uh falls well within the definition of permitted uses in the industrial zone in Shrewsbury. There are certainly actions that sometime that may be referred to as ancillary that that are part of the primary use of the pro- of the property, the principal use of the property uh that Mr. Lund may have some photographs of and everything else. But the idea that the buildings used for the warehousing, district preparation and distribution uh of equipment to customers is what NICO does. Um and so uh as to the arguments that he's made as to things that happened in June and things that happened in April and things that have been going on uh for some period of time, those don't relate to the building permit. What relates to the building permit is the manner in which NICO asserts that it's going to utilize the property uh in this reduced fashion and in full understanding what its obligations are to the town of Shrewsbury. NICO has been in Shrewsbury for more than ten years. It has been a good corporate citizen. It has complied with all laws, rules and regulations and fully cooperated, been a valuable member of this community uh and looks forward to continuing to do that even as they rightsize their business and deal with uh all of the issues that that come with that. Um and so uh there is no reason to suggest that their reduction in space is somehow going to prospectively result in a violation of zoning. The type of case in which a building permit is the proper form for that is when the building is being built for a specific use that's not permitted. By way of example, if the building permit was issued to build a car dealership on the lot, it would be appropriate to appeal the permit because you can't have a car dealership. That's not the case here. Uh what Mr. Lund's trying to do with his photographs and and his evidence that he's tried to tie is take uh isolated instances of uh a business that's grown. We should encourage that type of use of the parking area that Mr. Lund referred to as opposed to criticize it because it means that they're doing well in their business uh and and continue to do that, and they recognize their needs to do that. They've been in in full compliance. Um I'm certainly prepared, even though I have suggested in as part of that argument that it's irrelevant to the board uh to have Mr. Padilla uh describe in some more detail uh the letter that he did provide to the board that is part of our correspondence uh for your background. Uh but I I think it I at at in closing uh in the uh action with regard to Mr. Lund's appeal of uh the building permit in question, uh we would ask the board to deny that appeal uh and to uh therefore allow the reinstitution and reinstatement of the building permit immediately. Um so Madam Chair, I'll leave it to you. If you'd like to hear from a representative of NICO as to their plans moving forward, I'm not prepared to have them debate this evening actions that happened in the past because I don't think that's fair since it was never part of the application that anybody came ready to do that.
Thank you, Attorney Donahue. If there is someone from NICO that wishes to be heard, we would certainly welcome that. Star six for an unmute. Not sure that they're in attendance. Okay.
The last one of the wall.
Okay. Um.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to respond to Mr. Donahue's comments if I could. If no, if no one from NICO is come jumping on.
Uh there is nobody from NICO that I am aware of. So, Mr. Lund, if you could keep it concise, I will yield the chair to you. Thank you.
Sure. Um a couple of comments here. The uh if the board looks at the evidence we provided where the freestanding sign at two sixty Cherry Street, um I defy you to look at that sign and think that that was a sign for NICO. And then right beside that photograph, look at the sign on the wall here at two thirty Cherry Street. And that sign is a a wall sign again for J C B.
There's nothing about a sign in the application, Madam Chair. I mean, we have no, we're not here to talk about a sign.
Okay. Um. To stick to. Go ahead, Mr. Lund.
My point is, is the two businesses operating from the same location. And then I also would point to uh Mr. Cahill's comments in his uh uh letter that he attached to the hearing uh regarding jurisdiction. Uh in the in that uh jurisdiction, it's section eight uh under M G L uh forty A, where we have uh the Board of Appeals authority includes the power to make the orders or decisions, reverse or affirm in whole or in part, or modify any part of a decision which is subject to the appeal. Uh a concurring vote for our members, uh so on and so forth. Um and we're uh appealing and in my appeal, I clearly wrote the building inspector's decision that NICO uh J C B Northland when were uh did not require any type of variance or special permit in order to have a building permit issued. Uh also, uh item one, uh I did not give up on that. Uh item one, the uh I received a letter from Mr. Cahill that that is going for planning board review on on February fourth. Am I mistaken on what that planning board review is, Mr. Cahill?
No, that is correct. They have applied for a site plan review before the board on February fourth.
Uh thank you. So I appreciate that, the fact that uh one of our two issues were uh addressed prior to the ZBA hearing. Uh again, the second and most profound issue is the fact that that's an allowed use going on over there. Um it was a hidden use uh where where at all the uh information provided by the town regarding the use going on over there. Uh and the applicant frankly was was that there was no uh prohibited use or use requiring a special permit. From those decisions, a building permit was issued. Those decisions are clearly in our application to the ZBA of what we're refuting, which is automobile sales is occurring and it's not allowed by right. Garage and repair is occurring and will still continue, and it's not allowed by right. And construction sales requires a special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lund.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I see we have, I see we have town council here. Does he have any comment on the situation?
We're going to get to that. Um actually, that's the next point of business here. Um thank you. Um I would like to turn it over to Town Council Steve Medels for his comments.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um so there's a lot here for the board to digest. Um I do think uh the appeal, the application for the appeal is in proper form. Um and I do think the board just has to take each item. I agree with Attorney Donahue that the appellant is limited to what's on his application that's before the board and no other matters. Uh and a lot of those other matters aren't subject to the jurisdiction of this board anyway. Um but I don't think, I didn't read the appeal as limited to the building permit. I I appreciate the point that Attorney Donahue was making that um the uses are separate. But it, you know, the appeal is it is rather inartful in terms of how it connects the building permit with those uses. But I do think it's a section eight appeal of uh alleged zoning violations. So I think the ZBA has to take each of those items and make a determination based on the evidence and based on the property owner's uh counterpoints or uh challenges to the allegations.
Thank you, Attorney Medels. Um.
Madam Chair, may I? Uh may I just ask a question to Town Council?
Certainly.
Um, Council, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So um let's not, I just sort of restate what I think your opinion is, but um that the appeal is not strictly limited to the the terms of the building permit, in other words, the construction of lavatories and a dividing wall, and that this actually is the appropriate form for considering whether or not um the uses at the property are beyond what's allowed under the bylaw. Am I going too far in that in saying that or no?
No, you articulated it better than I did. That is.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, that that alarms me. Um because I I was, um my impression was I found myself very persuaded by um Attorney Donahue's argument that really there has to be a very strong connection between uh the permitted issue um and the complaints. And in that case, I wonder, there's a lot of information before us, but I wonder if that kind of uh determination would require almost something like a mini trial about what's happening or not happening at the site and whether it goes beyond what is allowed uh under the zoning rules, which is not what I was prepared for this evening, and I'm not sure we are prepared for.
Madam Chair, I have a question as well.
Yep.
And my que- my question's for Mr. Donahue. Um you, I I'm not sure. I want to make sure I'm clear on some comments you made regarding the complaints the appellant is making um with regard to primary use, and then you also mentioned ancillary uses. So my main question is how how if if the appellant um I'll say it this way. How would you recommend an appellant address complaints they have with regard to the ancillary uses that are occurring that may not be allowed by right? Say it that way.
Well, in 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 my opinion, uh and uh the the appellant makes it a little bit confusing, but um the right way to do it is to uh identify what the uses are to have the opportunity for the building inspector to investigate and speak to the owner as to the regularity of the occurrences in question as to whether they actually constitute a use uh and have a determination and to create a record of that so that a property owner who's uh is seeking a building permit unrelated to those uses has knowledge and notice that those are the matters that are going to be addressed by the zoning board of appeals.
I appreciate that. So that that's a great explanation. We are seeing all of that evidence now. Um perhaps this could have been handled a different way, but I I have to say the appellant has record of several months trying to make that happen. So um that's all I have for now in terms of questions.
Thank you. Um, do we have um town staff that would like to be heard on this matter? Mr. Cahill.
Uh no comment at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Sheen.
Yeah, I I would be glad to um answer any questions, but I don't have any specific comments.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I have a question.
Patrick?
Um, this is for uh for um Chris is I couldn't find it here in the paperwork that I was just looking through, but uh at one point there was um a complaint about the odor from the evaporator, and since then it's been only used to, I believe, seventy-five percent capacity, and it's got a regular P M schedule. Has that um has that changed anything? Is that a problem?
So um the what it it so that that part of it has been a problem, I have to admit. So here's what happened. Um I sent you folks in one of the emails. It's the one, it's the health department report. Um Phil Ledger is a a representative of uh the health department and of course, Shrewsbury is regional. So you're part of the Worcester, you know, and there's health agents that work different towns. So with that um evaporator, we had mounted several years of complaints. And um the it was an ongoing issue. Uh we had young kids at the time coming up through the house. The way it was remedied or the 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 attempt to remedy was that I was required to have Mr. Ledger or somebody else. I had to call him when the thing was being used and try to coordinate getting them here so they could smell. Without that, it was very hard to communicate. And uh so at the end of the day, what they ended up doing is is they extended a the the flu, the exhaust off of that device so that it blew past our house, but it was never ended. We still get off gassing every once in a great while. Um it's the, to me, regardless of what we were smelling, what they're emitting into the air, um I I can't explain to you, it's it's you can't see it, but when you smell it, it the off gassing is unbelievable. It it, to me, it speaks to, I mean, there it's obviously petroleum products that are getting the water cooked off. And there's something going up in the air that's that's not great. So to the, beyond that, it was going to cost me money to get like uh attorneys involved and do some sort of air quality testing or something like that in order to have any change in decision. And so, once it was pet uh the extended stack was put on, I didn't have the money at the time to pursue it any further, and that's where it ended.
If if I'm.
If I might, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Just to use the board's time appropriately, and to not to make this an exercise in, basically, that becomes an academic one more than realistic. You know, recognizing that the entire building's approximately 29,000 square feet, and NITCO's going down to approximately 11,000 square feet. They have noted description of their work in the letter I submitted of nine bullet points. And I suggest to you that those nine points all fall well within uses permitted in the industrial district in Shrewsbury. And I think it might be a better use of the board's energy and time than trying to look into an argument as to whether their performance of work in 2019 or 2020 constituted a repair shop when they say they're not going to have a repair shop in bullet point number two of their letter. And if they say they're not going to have it, then you could make a party decision they can't have it, absent some other relief in some fashion. And that would at least put a closure on it. But respectfully, when they describe what their operation's going to be as a support facility managed out of Wilmington for parts support for field technicians and local customers, that is a use permitted in the industrial district in Shrewsbury. And whether that's exactly what they were doing in the spring when Mr. Lund was otherwise communicating with people, to some extent, when they reduce their occupation from 29,000 to 11,000, it's going to be the end result. And, you know, I don't want to use this board's valuable time in something that's not going to happen if the building permit goes forward. You know, their ability to reduce their space is presupposed on demising the space out, to reduce the space, which is why, to some extent, appealing the building permit is, in my opinion, contrary to what Mr. Lund's trying to do, which is reduce the occupation and use of NITCO. So...
Can I respond to that, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Lund.
Thank you. Item two of that list says we no longer have a full service shop. Not that any type of repair is coming to an end. Secondly, I'm a certified building official with the state of Massachusetts, and the use of the building is going through a large expansion. Use is different than a physical construction. We seem to be making a big point tonight about a wall in a bathroom. That's an alteration in my world called Level 3. It's the largest form of alteration, and maybe Ms. Sheen can speak to this as well. That, we're having an expansion of a non-conformity because now we're going to introduce a new tenant into that building that's going to be on top of the NITCO use that's occurring there. It has impacts on the site as well as the facility. And so, the notion that a wall in a bathroom are not an expansion doesn't hold the same for physical construction as it does for a change of use of that facility. I yield to the chair again.
Thank you.
If I might?
Yes, Attorney.
Thank you.
Donahue, please proceed.
I think it's important to get grounded in facts. The alteration wall that Mr. Lund is talking about divides two spaces so you can have two different tenants. And somehow, the concern he has of an expanded use in the now reduced space, no longer occupied by NITCO, is going to be operated by a company who is a floral group and describes their use in the correspondence to you, part of your record, as warehousing and wholesale distribution of floral products and supplies. That warehousing and distribution is a use permitted as of right. To suggest that that's going to create a greater burden is simply facetious. It's consistent with the bylaw. NITCO's performance of what it's going to do inside its reduced space has to comply with your bylaw. There's no argument about that. And I suggest that their limitations that they're suggesting to you in writing, so it's clear for the building inspector moving forward, when they do do that, which they say is scheduled for April 1st, she now has a record of what they're going to use it for, and it has to be consistent with that. And Mr. Lund has it too. He has the same thing. He can hold them to that. They should be held accountable for what they write to this board.
Madam Chair?
Could I jump in for a second?
Yes, please.
Sorry, Chris. So, I just think I would like to clarify a couple of things. So, one thing is that the building code clearly says that you have to have zoning compliance in order to issue a building permit. It doesn't matter if the work inside the building or on the building is related to, you know, like, we keep talking about the two different tenant spaces. Really, you have to have zoning compliance in order to issue a building permit. So, that's what I think is the main purpose here, is that that is being appealed. It doesn't matter what the scope of work is inside the building. There's been, you know, some information presented that there's been, you know, zoning violations on the property. One thing that I was not aware of, you know, before all this documentation was presented, is that the letter from January 24, 2021 stating that major and minor repair is being done there, and then some other comments about repair will no longer be done. That is new information to me, based on this process tonight. So, trying to establish what was taking place at the property relative to zoning violations, that information is being presented. But yet, going forward, the board could certainly make some decisions about going forward. However, when you go forward, there has to be a clear zoning review and building code review on documents presented, building permit application, and that still is not clear. That's all I wanted to comment on right now.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Sorry, Peter. That was very helpful, Ms. Sheen. Before you spoke, I wrote down something just to try to summarize what's going on here. And Mr. Lund, this all started with a new building permit in April 13th. And that triggered, so, well, the appeal process. I see you shaking your head. So, let's clarify. So, a building permit, a new building permit was applied for, and you issued some complaints. We can talk about the back and forth, and then not, having your complaints not being addressed in the timeframe you would have liked, but we have a pandemic going on and a number of other things. But ideally, what you are asking for is that no building occur for this building and permit until this board rules on zoning compliance, whether there has been zoning compliance up until now. That's essentially what we want, right? What you're asking for. So, to Ms. Sheen's point, how can we get, what are the next steps? I understand there's limits to when we can rule on this appeal, but we need to know, we can't do that tonight. I don't foresee that. I see this continuing. And what is it we need to have in front of us before we can make a decision or not? Don't know who can answer that. Maybe Bernie?
Attorney Medals, he might be able to clarify that for us.
Yeah, so that was helpful from Patty Sheen on the building code doesn't allow for the permit for zoning violation. So, I think the board has to resolve for itself the allegations of the zoning violations. And Attorney Donahue presented some evidence to counter the claims. I agree that, you know, internet searches don't demonstrate natural use on the property. And I also wonder if the warehousing is of equipment, is some of the maintenance or repair of the equipment ancillary to the warehousing operation? I don't know. I'm not making the argument. But those are the kinds of issues I think this board needs to receive evidence on and then make a decision as to the facts presented by the appellant and the property owner. That there is a little glimmer of good news in this, I think, in that Attorney Donahue described that the building permit that is now subject to the appeal is for what appears to be a classic warehouse use and a reduction of the current tenant's footprint. So, perhaps we can get more clarification that that reduction will result in less of those challenged uses, if you will, for your next meeting. And we could start to see that the site will be fully in compliance with the requirements of the bylaw. And you could issue an order to ensure that, once you receive that evidence.
Right.
As that's a hopeful path forward.
Thank you for that.
Madam Chair, I wonder if I could make a kind of proposal where it relates to continuance. I think it has to be raised before we close the hearing. I might not be right about that procedurally, but my thought is...
I think we have to open the hearing to public before we can proceed. Bernie's at a yes?
I think Peter means continue the meeting, but if you haven't gone to public comment you need to go to public comment tonight, if you haven't done so already.
We have not, although we've heard from a lot of different people, we have not opened it up to public comment. So, I think I'd like to do that. So, if there's anyone out there still, it's not asleep yet, that would like to be heard on this matter, can I please ask that they unmute themselves and let us know? Star 6 to unmute. All right. All right. Sounds like we have no commentary from the public.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. George?
Do we have the property owner here that would like to make a comment?
I'm speaking for the property owner.
Yes, Attorney Donahue's there, and I think we tried that, and yes. So, Mr. Mulcahy, you were going to make a point?
Yeah, just, I think, sort of building on what Attorney Medals said in terms of the way forward. I think where I'm at on this currently is I think Mr. Lund has presented some very convincing evidence of what has been going on at the site in terms of whether or not it's in compliance with the zoning rules. I agree and trust Attorney Medals' counsel that this is basically a Section 8 appeal that we're looking at this point at whether or not they're actually complying with what the zoning laws require, and what Ms. Sheen said as well, that for a building permit to issue a prerequisite is compliance with zoning. So, I think the sort of missing piece here is that I'm not sure that Attorney Donahue has had an opportunity or was even prepared to thoroughly rebut or present his own case as to what was going on at the site and whether or not it's in compliance with zoning. So, my thought would be that we continue to the next meeting, give the parties a chance to prepare sort of a more complete discussion of that, and then we can make our sort of zoning compliance decision at that time, if that makes sense.
Thank you. I guess, since we're passing it through the board, let's... Lisa, do you want to go next and give us some of your thoughts?
I agree with all of that, and Peter said it much better than I was trying to say it. But I would like to know, I would like to have the appellant's opinion on continuing this to February 4th, I believe it is. He's done a great job presenting his evidence, but I would like to also see evidence on the other side. And it's pretty clear what we have to decide on, whether sale of automobiles is allowed by right, service and repairs is allowed by right, whether no special permit is required for sales of construction equipment, and whether no site plan approval is required. I believe that's what we're going to be
Right.
looking at, unless someone says otherwise.
No.
So, Mr. Lund, do you have an opinion on continuing?
Just a comment through the chair. February 4th is the proposed planning board meeting for site plan reviews.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's end of February.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
Right. Mr. George, you have any thoughts on this?
I kind of go along with Peter and Lisa, what they've stated, and I'd like to continue until we have more information.
Madam Chair, the next meeting is February 22nd.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
It's all the same to me.
Mr. Fullen, any comments or questions or poems?
No, so, what goes on with the, so this building permit is just going to stay suspended until we meet again?
That is correct. Attorney Medals, would you like to, yes, he's shaking his head. Yes. So, it'll be suspended until we reconvene.
Okay, that's my only question.
Thank you.
To the chair, you have to continue to a date certain, date and time certain.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I think I'm the last man standing in terms of commentary, and I would just say, there's so much to unpack here that it's, I think, really in all of our best interest to reconvene at our next meeting with all the information that we've been given. And I would applaud everyone who's participated in this. Everybody's done enormous work, and we really appreciate having all this information. So, thank you to everyone. I do think that we are at a point where we would need to entertain a motion to continue the hearing until February 22nd, our next scheduled zoning board of appeals meeting. So, if I could get a motion, please?
At 6:30.
At 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Move is stated with Mr. Cahill's question.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And Mary Beth Lynch, aye. So, moved, continued until February 22nd at 6:30. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that brings to an end an epic meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
Believe it, Madam Chair, we actually have one small matter left, which is, I promise you, it's going to take 10 seconds. A meeting change for the December meeting this year, to change it from December 27th to December 20th, as we did in 2020. So, it doesn't fall between the two holidays for people. So, if we do it 10 or 11 months in advance, it'll give people more notice than we did it this year. So, we'd just like to vote on that change of the December 2021 meeting date to December 20th.
So, can I get a motion to move the December zoning board of appeals meeting to December 20th, 2021?
And move that stated?
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. George. All in favor? Lisa?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
And Mary Beth, and I'm going to be singing Peter, Paul, Patrick all night. All right, so, thank you, everyone, for a wonderfully entertaining meeting and all your time. And we'll see you here at next meeting.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good night.
Good night.